She falls asleep. What did you do here?
Most of them.
Wrong day.
It's the past. It's the past. It's in there.
From the meeting to order it. Eugene, if you would give the indication for us.
Father, I thank you that this is your world. And that you give us positions and places in it to to do our best, to ask you to give us the right heart, with clarity of mind, practice by your spirit, that what we do would be helpful and beneficial for the township and town. Father, you would get glory through all I ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
They can join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you do a roll call for us, Heather.
Michael.
Here.
Dee.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Nola.
Yep, here.
Christine.
Here.
Jeff.
Here.
And Heather, here.
Thanks. We have approval of the agenda, and I have two things to mention here. One is obviously Eric is here for the audit. He did not want to push until next month, which good, great. Uh, so, and then the next thing is that we just got in uh about raising the water rates from the Water Policy Board. I've sent that email out to board earlier today. Um, but it came in late. I printed them and put them at your spot. So I'd like to add that uh after the Fred Meyer Berry Junction Trail Commission appointment. So do we have a motion to approve the agenda with those two adjustments?
Take a motion to approve the agenda with those two adjustments.
Support by Noah, support by Eugene, and discussion on board. Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the approval of past meeting minutes. These are for the tolls in November twenty twenty four. Two small things. One is that under paying the bills, a blank was left for the date. And for the Berry Junction Trail Commission member, the motion uh was a copy of Metro Act authorization, so that just has to be adjusted. We're looking for a motion to approve those meeting minutes. With those two adjustments, unless anyone has anything else.
I'll make that motion to approve the minutes with the adjustments.
Motion by Michael, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Noah, any discussion among the board? Here none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Next, we have the treasuries report. Thoughts, views, comments, concerns from the board on treasury report. We now, we will put that on file. Next, we have paying the bills.
Motion to pay bills.
Motion by Noah, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Christine, any discussion among the board? Here none, roll call vote.
Christine, yes. Nola, yes. Dee.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Dean.
Epstein.
F.
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have the fire department reports. Obviously, chief had to run out for a call, but the report is included in the back if anyone wants to look at it. Uh, the fire department responded seven to requests for services. Often put several mutual and on the way requests to neighboring departments. It also states in here, we have placed our Keith the Reef Red Reef up at the firehouse to remind everyone to use care when it uh comes to holiday decorations. If we should have a fire-related incident that was caused by holiday decoration, they will change your red bulb to a white one. There's just a reminder for all to save during the holiday season. With the start of the winter season, we ask that people remember to dress appropriately, use extra time when driving, brush the snow off their cars, and turn their headlights on. Though I know there have been some fires since then, I do not know if they're Christmas decoration related or not. Next, we have the planning and commission report, if you would please.
At uh November twenty sixth, we had uh whole business of uh special use in a site plan review for twenty two ten Whitehall Road. Uh, it's called Berry Junction Business Park, it's right on the corner of River and Whitehall. Well, Silver Hill goes north. Um, yeah. It was a comeback, we were getting quotes um for fencing because of the the resident on the north side of the property was just worried about uh privacy and it's uh oh, trees being cut down, stuff cleared for the building. Um, that was discussed, and they're actually worried more about a future project that might or might not be in the works, so they're they haven't worked out. Um, but then we approved this uh site plan review and special use. Um, with a special thing for a second entrance off river, only if it's permitted by the uh road commission. Uh, second, uh, we had another site plan review for eighty seven or twenty eight eighty seven industrial park, Parkway, um, D and J Sewer. Um, looking to instruct another pole barn for equipment storage. Um, he's, he was here maybe a year or two ago and um started his uh spot there and none, business is doing good. Uh, motion approved for the pole building. Um, and then next is a site plan review for twenty three fifty one Holton Road. Um, so the Brooklyn Bagels, that's going in by the family fireman home. Um, it was just, it's coming to us because of uh considered a major adjustment for the uh the signs around the canopy. Um, going through the going through the procedures to get it done. Um, and then they also have go to the uh a variance because the signs are bigger than allotted, but uh that will be at their next meeting. That's it.
Thank you, Matt. Next, we have the planning and zoning staff, if you would see.
Permits for November nine were issued. Uh, this is about the time of year where number permits declines. It is still above average for this time of year, which is typical this year. Sixteen enforcement cases were investigated in November, five were closed. One citation was issued. We have a court date scheduled for no uh December twenty seventh, and two citations are pending.
Thank you. Next, we have our maintenance and maintenance reports, if you would, just
uh with the end of fall, beginning of winter, and apparently fall again. Uh, been a mix of things. Been picking up leaves and snow plowing. Here's the end of the leaf season. We had an impeller on one of the track backs that needs repair, so we pulled out one of the backup track backs, wrecked out the bugs to that one. Uh, we were able to get everything completed that needed to be done. Uh, with winter being here, my focus is on the fire department and township policy clear. After that transfer station, then I'm hoping to get Twin Lake Cemetery and Horsepower cloud as well as uh tie up the bike paths. There's no bills here by my spot. Um, at Eagle Sports Park, we had removed the wrestler over mulch. So we are all set to get the new play equipment that is going to be delivered, I heard this week. Then I also heard that it is at the installer's um as much as the rule. So I don't know if it's going to go to the Eagle Field, or if it's going to stay there until they're ready to install it. And they asked, we could possibly install it this winter and before April. I told them that I talked with everybody, so there's something else we'll be discussing. Want to do it before then? Said that they wouldn't like to pay for payment until April, so we'll talk about that. Um, at ten, we've we've had all port jobs moved, porta potties moved out of all the cars, with the exception of the transportation. Um, Twin Lake Stand, we've got a new Christmas tree up and it's lit. That's looking good. Uh, first pile at the transfer station, it's already been ground up, I believe, that's third time this season. And Twin Lake Cemetery moved a lot of leaves and someone's been doing some fish tailing out there with the quads, it looks like. And somebody drove through the lawn, right to the cemetery. That being said, putting up some trail cameras, doesn't look like there's any damage that was done there. Still, that's good. Um, that's about it.
Excellent. Thank you. Excellent. The cemetery report, if you would have it.
Um, it's pretty short. Uh, we are coming to the close of the busy season for the cemetery. Uh, we tend to be more busy during the spring and summer because people wait to do cremation burials. Um, that being said, that's because we have extra cost um this time of year for winter burials because there's special procedures that have to take place um to do that. So this is the time of year that we just get a lot of the admin stuff done, which there is a good amount to do, and there's always archive stuff to do as well. Um, so that's going to be a task for the winter. And then I just put in here again, the shout out to the maintenance team for keeping the cemeteries looking nice. Um, the Twin Lake Cemetery roads are done, completed. And then um looking at the remapping project for the next budget year.
Excellent. Thank you. And now to one of the main events, maybe the main event. Eric, if you would like to take over. Wow. Can everyone else stare at staff and run?
Okay, we have completed your audit for the year in March thirty one two thousand twenty four. I guess I should slightly rephrase it, pretty much wrapped it up. Uh, that's why you're looking at grant copies rather than the final copies. We're going to be dotting our i's across your teeth this week to get it done, but we're so close. Like Jeff said, I thought it made more sense to get it in now rather than hang out and wait until January to present it. So, um, anyway, I'm going to present the audit on the uh screen here, uh as much as possible. Um, if you guys have the hard copy there, and I'm welcome to look at that as well. So let's get started. On page one, uh, in two and three of the financial statements of your independent auditor's report. At the top of page one there is the um, is the opinion on the uh independent auditor's report. Where we say in our opinion that financial statements referred to above, for that really all the two respects, that there is financial statements that adhere then in accordance with the generally accepted accounting principles. And that's um basically we're saying there's the best of our testing and procedure. We believe your financial statements are materially correct. We use the word material because we're looking at the big picture, we're not auditing every last little thing we want to do. So I know you guys think that has some closing, a lot of adjustments and all that, but you did get to where it needed to be. Uh, following that is the uh management discussion and analysis, which I'm not going to go through, but that is a nice overview of the financial statements from the township's perspectives, but deep bank ten pages. So it's kind of a book that's written on audits, so that's a good place to go if you kind of want a quick stamp shot of everything. Well, let's look at some numbers. Um, this is um the uh general fund with the current year compared to the prior year. If you're looking at the financial statements, thirty nine is probably the best place to go. It's got the most detail. This is a little bit more summarized than it all on screen. Also, they've got the prior year up there, but we'll run through this. Um, starting at the top there, total revenues like current year are one million seven hundred and sixty thousand, six hundred and sixty seven dollars. That's an increase of about a hundred and ten thousand dollars last year, primarily due to two lines. Uh, property taxes up there at the top are above fifty one thousand dollars due to growth in tax and value. And then investment earnings there of ninety thousand, some changes up about thirty five thousand, new higher investment return. So those are both uh good news. Other revenue categories are pretty similar to last year. Total expenditures are one million four hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, an increase of about two hundred and forty six thousand dollars. Most of that is on the uh public works line, and that is related to the street work that you did. Again, remember, we're talking three thirty one twenty four, so we're really talking last summer, not this summer. Uh, but you guys did additional street work, although really probably did more with typical years for the street work with the previous year was kind of a normal, it looks, the more you did projects that summer. Um, so that's where the bulk of the increase is. There's capital outlays, a couple of thirty goals you can see in that encompasses the mower, the plow and solder, riding uh leaf blower, the new Twin Lake sign, um, things of that nature. There's a few little other tweaks along the way, including some increased health insurance costs. That leaves you up at the top over there, an increase of two hundred and seventy nine thousand, seven hundred and twenty seven dollars. On your other financing services and uses, there was some sales of capital assets and all the transfers up to the weed op, the weed, weed eradication funds. Gives you the overall increase in some fund balance, two hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred and five dollars. Ending fund balance, two million seven hundred and fifty thousand, two hundred and seventy four dollars. So the general fund had a good carry, probably some roomwork done by a few things, still put a few looks in the bank. Any questions on the general fund? Okay. Chief's going to miss out, his favorite fund. Uh, this is going to be at page forty, if you wanted to look at it in there, I've got some prior years up there as well. Uh, starting at the top, total revenues at nine hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars. You can see that's a pretty substantial increase of about three hundred and thirty six thousand dollars. That's primarily due to the new fire millage that you're using to do the full-time stamping at the fire departments. This was the first year it was collected, so that's why some property taxes is going up um substantially. Um, investment earnings, just like the general fund are up in here as well, and there was a ten thousand of a grant or some turnout related items like that. Um, on the expenditure side, total expenditures of four hundred and twenty five thousand, one hundred and sixty three dollars. I have a quiet year. Um, capital outlay encompassed the uh work that was done at the fire station and the new uh uh vehicle for the fire chief as well. Uh, operating activity under current public safety there, and some of that was due to the turnout here that you got the grant for. And then those two full-time firefighters took effect this fiscal year. So basically, you got the money at the end of last fiscal year to hire them at the beginning of this fiscal year. So next year, when you look at three thirty one twenty five, this is going to jump in um expenses related to the cost of employing additional firefighters. That was your the increase of four hundred and ninety three thousand, one hundred and fifty one dollars. Ending fund balance of one million three hundred and eighty four thousand, five hundred and twenty five dollars. Um, that's good news. I know uh you guys need to do fire trucks every few years, so except I believe you guys will uh save up for a few years, then are able to to buy those as they continue to get more and more expensive, so. But you're in the fire line. Um, the last one, the last big one, you know, this one is living up on page nineteen, if you're looking on the board, but this is the sewer fund. Uh, this fund has um a lot of ups and downs over the years, but the last few years has gone a bit better. Um, in the current year, you've got charges for services at the top of one hundred and fifty three thousand, six hundred and thirty four dollars. Uh, you can see that's up about um thirty thousand dollars from last year with um additional usage, as that continues to go up. And then um for operating expenses, a hundred and fifty eight thousand, uh, three hundred and sixty three dollars. That's down about sixteen thousand dollars, and the counties have their new flat system, brain system, they're getting a flat uh usage system now where they are right, like try and chase the ups and downs or are doing a long-term smoothing, which is reduce the fluctuations in your costs, and this year actually reduced your cost for treatment to the county. Uh, so you've got a small operating loss of forty six thousand, seven hundred and twenty nine dollars. Then under non-operating activity, you've got your revenue, your investment earnings, your interest expense. Uh, just like in the other funds, you see a nice increase in investment earnings. Interest expense is slowly coming down as you pay the bonds down. So overall, your net position decreased twenty three thousand, seven hundred and sixty one dollars to one million, three hundred and forty eight thousand, six hundred and ninety two dollars. As a reminder, um enterprise funds like the sewer fund, sewer fund is your only enterprise fund. They use accounting more like the private sector, so your other funds are all focused on current resources. We call that modified accrual. So your cash receivables, payables, you don't have fixed assets and long-term debt in those funds. Um, unlike the sewer fund, which does. So what I'm getting at is when you see that one million, three hundred and forty eight thousand, that includes all of your plate and the ground debt of any related debt. Um, the unrestricted portion of that net position gives you a better idea what's actually available to spend. And that's at a million, forty thousand, two hundred and nine dollars, down slightly from last year, just like one bit of our net position down slightly as well. Uh, this fund has been able to build it up a little bit over the last couple of years. Um, your debt service, um, those bonds go out another ten or eleven years yet, I believe. I know there was a point in time several years ago where it looked like this fund was eventually going to run out of money. Uh, due to uh some additional revenue sources, additional usage, and some new connections. Um, we managed to build that up and manage to uh and push that problem down the road if that's all that'll make other. So um, that's good news as well. Can't tell, and there are good news tonight, so. Any questions on sewer fund? Okay, um, I think that's all I was going to cover in here. You guys also have a couple of letters there, so we'll briefly talk about those. The top letter, we have audited the financial statements letter. This is the auditor's letter to those charged governance. This is the letter we're required to provide every year to for every entity that we audit. Doesn't matter that I come to the meeting, you can read this whole letter, just standard same as the writing. And there's very specific things that go in this letter, there are any significant new accounting policies that have been added this year. On the fact that we look at significant estimates, look, they're reasonable. Any difficulties encountered before the audit? And as I noted, the audit was delayed to give the township additional time to prepare for the audit. Usually, um, we should have been out here a few months ago, we thought it was due back in September, but here we are in December, it's done now. Um, significant audit adjustments, any disagreements, management, accounting, or auditing principles that were not any a few of our audits. There's really not a whole lot here of interest, but we're required to provide it to you, and that's, there you go. And then the other letter we've got is our recommendation letter. Uh, this is the like performing the audit letter. We are not auditing your internal controls, we do an audit, we're auditing your financial statements. So we're in the course of planning, performing our audit, and come across items that we think are material or significant. We bring them to your attention in the form of a recommendation letter. And uh, as I mentioned before, the audit delayed due to uh just not being auditable, there was delays in doing reconciliations and and stuff of that nature. Really, rather than have a bunch of recommendations, we kind of boil it down to one recommendation, which is just ensuring that key functions are performed on a timely basis. Um, especially things like bank reconciliations and your entiles and things of that nature. So having you guys kind of contracted with some third parties to help you get caught up. And I think we're about at that point now as we wrap up the audit. But that's definitely the the big item this year, I know that we caused some delays, but uh here we are, so. Any questions on anything I talked about or did not talk about? All right, well, that being the case, as the highlight's over, I'll be leaving you. Anyway, thank you very much. We uh appreciate you coming out to do the audit every year. Thanks to the board, and simply thanks to the uh staff here. Jeff, that uh Christine, and the other especially. We drove nuts for a few days, but that's how we got through it. And Nola came in and did a board interview with me, so I appreciate that as well. So having said all that, thank you very much. I know Jeff's been hurting, and thanks Jeff for the last four years, and best of luck in your future endeavors.
I appreciate it, Eric. It's been fun, as fun as audits can be every year.
Wow. Okay.
Good, yeah, it's excellent to have that wrapped up. Get that done while I'm still there. Once Eric gets me the final documents and everything too, then those will be available.
Yeah, we're working on resolving one issue yet with your mayor custardson. Um, it could potentially cause a small adjustment in the general fund. Once we get that resolved or wrapped up or final funding review, and I really would like to see this thing done, done, and issued by the end of the week. But uh, we'll get it done out as soon as we can, and we'll get you guys PDS and bring it back to that point in time, so. And file with the state, keep the state happy.
Yeah. That's important for that state, shared revenue of fifty percent of the budget.
I'm sure you've got some of those nasty letters they like to send out.
I don't think we've gotten one yet. Ever?
Nope.
I'm screaming the man. Excellent. Uh, we're on to our first public comment. Do we have any public comment? Someone wants to follow up the audit? All right, give you another chance to finish.
I set that mark too hard.
So we're on to our first decision item, which is for twenty twenty five, meeting and proceedings schedule. So one note on here, which pointed out, I think, I think all the meetings end up being fine. But on the closing dates, the fourth of July is a Friday. And so we end up with some workers, maintenance workers would be working then, but the rest of the office would normally be closed anyways. And so the two normal ways to handle that would be to have a day before that, also have the office closed, or to make it a floating day for the employees that wouldn't be here on that Friday. So, and that could go either way, either way is fairly normal and reasonable. I think it makes sense to include it as a floating thing so that the people can choose which day they would take that, and then the office can still be open one more day. Or two office people have to sit.
Yeah, I'm sure that they would prefer a floating holiday.
All right. It's good. I mean, in my extreme view, like eliminate the holidays and just add the homeless floating holidays, people can choose where they are, so. And that's how I would like to take it. It gives, gives people the choice, you know? So I'll make, I I'll make the motion to approve the meeting. Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I guess, um, did we the Juneteenth is ahead, which
I was just gonna ask, I was just gonna talk about that.
I, I guess it
So there was, um, there's been discussion about that, uh, like our staff thing, whatever. And we've talked about it a few times. I reached out to a couple of our neighboring townships and asked them if they do get it for the holiday. Obviously, like the bigger one has a union, and so there's a whole mess with that. Yes, they do it, but it's floating holiday. And then our other neighbor, they do get that day. We don't have to, and county takes it. So lots of the countywide is taking it. Um, so we don't have to, but I threw it in there because that's getting to be more of the
It's becoming more of a norm, even though it's Texas holiday. But we have, we have eleven days here. The feds approved it now.
Yeah.
So it's against the courts, the feds. Uh, so, but there's eleven holidays on here, and so if we eliminate that one, then we should probably add another one for the employees, I feel. I think would be reasonable for them. Yeah. It's the Juneteenth day in particular.
Yeah, and with so many of the county, like countywide people taking it off too. Like if we have to reach out to people, they're also like not in office, so.
Right.
And I can't do banking either, right? So.
So did you want to make Juneteenth a floating?
Um, it would have to be either, it would have to be either a full-out holiday or or a full-out not. Because
Believe it or that, right?
Oh, either the best, that would be best, best.
Yeah, like you're saying, if the county's doing it, you need to get them all, I guess.
Yeah.
So I'll make the motion to approve the meeting. We have closing schedules for the whole township for the calendar year twenty twenty five with the adjustment of July for being a floating policy.
What?
Motion by Michael, support by Nola. Do we have any discussion among the board? Here none, roll call vote.
Please.
Yes.
Michael.
Yes.
Christine.
Yes.
Jeffrey.
Yes.
Plus, yes. Eugene.
Yes.
Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have Cattalka land sale proposal. And so this involves the five small little pieces uh being put together, requested as one here. We have a true cash value for each one of those individually along with the comparables. If you add up all the true cash values together, it's seven thousand dollars. If you add up all the comparables together, it's twenty thousand dollars. So significant difference, obviously, as as the market's been over the last few years.
I'll say that again, seven thousand?
Yeah, so for the, so from assessing, um, it adds up to seven thousand dollars for all of them together. And the comparables from a realtor that run it through the computer program comes to twenty thousand.
We've had somebody asking about these.
Someone has requested these up for sale. Yep. This is vacant property.
I know it's vacant, but what is, what's planned, you know?
Uh, their plan, as far as I understand, not that we have like a contract in writing with them or anything like that, it's to do with individuals. One, as far as I understand. So, and then Marilyn, the realtor, Marilyn Tucker, had included little notes of no parcels have sold in the past year in Lakewood Club, as reported in our multiple listing service, that's small, so it's difficult to gauge value. But this is what the computer kept up.
This is confusing to me, so these here are separate lots, I mean, one for seven, and then these This is confusing to me, so these here are separate lots, I made a bunch of seven, and then these.
It's the same, you know, it's just these, these come from the, these numbers are from the assessment, these numbers are from already.
Oh, I gotcha, I gotcha, okay.
Just so we have the two to compare.
Right.
I do not explicitly know on this property in particular. A lot of the properties that's divided up around Lakewood areas come back on taxes at various points. A lot of it end up at certain points with the state, a lot end up with the county, and then also came to the township. So if these came because the guy took them back and they were individually bought, if they were part of a big deal of fifteen thousand pieces in eighty-seven.
Not making a motion, but last time we had something like this, we kind of split, split between the decided price. But that was thirteen, it's high, doing my math, right? So anyway.
Yeah, I mean, one of these seems high, and I know Marilyn before, she's included notes, you know, about seems high compared to, as compared to her experience going by the computer. This is what she did not say, that she just said that there's not good comparables because of the small size in the area.
Just joking.
Seven thousand.
Yeah, I don't know what this is, if that's an easement or if that's.
It's a slotted right of way. Actually, thirteen.
So they. Unless they get an abandonment, right?
Right, not directly across that.
So go with it.
Go.
They want to build a house? Yeah, I don't know, is there any, are they gonna have to create a private drive?
I think they would have to. I think they'd have some point from what it is.
She would have to create a private driveway through this slotted rights of way?
Mm-hmm. That's goose egg way.
Goose egg.
Yep. Yeah, that's Cattolica part, it's the green part.
If we ever do develop that, then it's gonna be at eighty. But we're trying to determine a value, we already said we were gonna sell it, so. Was it thirteen fifty?
Thirteen thousand five hundred.
They're gonna have to do a road off of. Yeah.
The value?
One point two eight.
Yeah. All right, I make a motion to, uh, approve setting minimum bid for the parcels under consideration for the value of ten thousand.
Support.
All right, motion by Heather, support by Christie. Any other discussion among the board? Very none, roll a call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Next, we have Russell land sale proposal. And so this is that two point five three acres that was initially requested as part of the large land sale. Cut it out of that with the devoper, the requestor agrees, because someone else is going to buy it. But then they ended up starting the process and then dropping it, not wanting to buy it. So now we're starting back at step one with the original requestor, this is step two. And so we have in here, the true cash value from assessing came back at twenty-two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. The comparable market analysis came at forty-three thousand. But Marilyn Tucker said, however, similarly located by half the size, also so in the past year, also on Russell for eleven thousand, with an average sold price of eight thousand six hundred. That would value our Russell row of two point five three acres at twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty. It may be a more reasonable price to get this one sold. So, obvious.
This was a part of an original larger sale.
Yep.
Right, how much did we discount the larger sale when we took this part out of it?
We did not, no discount.
There was no reduction?
There's no reduction.
I'd just be a nice guy to couple it, buy it, price it, take it out. Go ahead with it.
Yes. It cost me a bunch more to put it back in. I would have no trouble just putting it back in here as your sale. I'm making motions to put that property back into the original property that was sold, I worded.
I would support that.
I don't like to hit a guy twice.
No, I agree.
Trying to think about title company lawyer closing, if that's a viable option.
How much do those things usually cost?
Which thing?
Type company.
Oh, it depends on if you're the seller or the buyer. And it depends on how much you're doing. I mean, to track his large number of parcels, it costs us only, only a few thousand dollars.
Yeah, so probably you do then, to cover the cost.
Hmm, to cover the cost, and I think we have something in the policy about doing not even something that wouldn't cover the cost.
Right.
Yeah, so there's that to, there's that to consider. So we probably could do something like that. I think that would be viable in the policy to do whatever amount to cover the cost. Are you game for that?
Yep.
Cover the closing costs?
Right.
Cover the closing costs. All right, so we, we will, we will put it back in, but the buyer is to cover all closing costs. All right, so your motion is to approve the sale with the buyer covering the closing costs, right? And so.
For cost.
And so is this, because why I was clarifying, we're like halfway through this process.
Yes.
Uh, because right now, normally, we'd be putting a minimum bid and going for that sale at the next meeting. But this is to not do that, this is to not have it in the next meeting, right? Just add the closing costs. All right, so that's the motion by Eugene, right?
Support.
And that's the support by Nola.
Yep.
Okay.
How do we determine, how do we determine the value?
We don't have to.
We don't have to.
We don't have to, it was, it was, the value of this was determined when we agreed to sell him the big thing in the first place.
Yep.
And we didn't deduct anything when this was removed from it.
Oh.
So technically, he paid for it already in what we had done before.
Oh, all right, okay, got you.
Yep, yep.
Yep.
Congratulations.
Any other discussion among the board?
Do you, do you need to take away the next board meeting? Make that a part of the motion that we do not need to bring it back to the board in January?
I think that's included in this motion. Okay, so I think that's fine.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Anything else? Roll call vote.
Nola?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have board review appointment, uh, but it's really board review appointments. So with Eugene Cooley winning the trustee position, it's an incompatible office to be on the board review, so he is now off that. We have three people that are Oriana, Randall Moyn, Craig Minette, and Brian Valier. This is Bray down here, but.
You can't live all the time, man.
He's a smart one. And so we had a one person put in as an alternate as well, which is a good idea because it's such a small board. And that's Susan McGaffin, because she's new, she hasn't been on the board, uh, short bio, one paragraph bio, she's included in the packet for us to read here. Now, if it's not going to be particularly controversial, I think someone could motion all of the names together. Otherwise, we can go through and look them individually.
I make a motion to approve the appointment of Randall Moyn, Craig Monet, Brian Valier, alternate Susan McGaffigan, to the Dalton Township Board every year.
Motion by Nola, do we have a support? All support, support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Very none, roll call vote.
Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Christie?
Yes.
Jeffrey?
Yes.
Paula?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. And those people have to be sworn in within ten days. That is, uh, unique law specifically for the board review. Next, we have water policy board member appointment. And so we've already adjusted some of this previously because I was having scheduling conflicts in my last couple of months here in office. But with Heather being supervisor-elect, uh, even though she isn't in office yet, which will be soon, makes sense to bring her to these next few boards. And then we have backups, uh, on these as well. And so water policy board, obviously, deals in water policy.
I make a motion to approve Heather Cooley being added to the water policy board and Krista Miles to be the alternate.
Or motion by Nola, support by Eugene, we have a discussion among the board. Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have wastewater board member appointment, same type of situation.
Make a motion to approve Stephen Kerr being added to the wastewater board as the alternate, and Heather Cooley as the primary representative.
Motion by Nola, do we have a support? Support by Michael, any discussion among the board? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. Next, we have Fred Meyer, very junction trail commission appointment, same type of situation, but for a.
Nola, I make a motion to approve Michael Bennett being added to the Fred Meyer very junction trail commission as the alternate, and Heather Cooley as the primary representative.
Motion by Nola, do we have a support? Or by Lee, any discussion among the board? Very none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes. And now, we have the water rate added item that I left everyone's position up here. And so the water policy board approves this increase, which is for five point five percent. I don't like bringing things at the last minute to the board like that in particular, but this is set to go into effect in January, right? Uh, this board is odd, they've been talking about redoing the contract for the last four years that I've been in office. I was never put on that subcommittee, but it hasn't been really done, it is not a well-structured organization. Because the only way to resolve conflicts is a lawsuit. Uh, but nevertheless, this is not the biggest issue, it's a fairly normal rate increase, uh, but definitely something to look at over the next few years. Today, we have this one in particular. I guess I'm a little lost. Is it what this is covering, this is for, this is drinking water? Correct, yeah, so it's municipal city water. Yep, and so, and these are the rates, four different meter sizes in usage rates. So it's not through the country? Uh, no, so the north side system is connected, and who sits on the board is a couple of county commissioners. And then Dalton Township, Muskegon, Charter Township, Laketon Township, Fruitland Township. Yeah, I believe that's all, and then a couple of county commissioners that represent those areas as well. That's who makes up that board. And so this is considered the north side system. Wastewater Management Committee is a much wider, wider representation of the whole system. Uh, but this is kind of segmented out in the different areas of the county.
What I'm, what I'm saying is within, within all of these townships.
Correct, everyone that's represented the rate, this is what's, yep. Correct, this is what's being approved. And so the structure of that board looks like the water policy board approves it, and then each municipality also has to approve it. That's how it's currently set up as far as the structure. If the water policy board approves it, and one of the municipalities, the participating municipalities does not approve it, there's no obvious way to resolve that conflict except for a lawsuit. Uh, so that's what I'm talking about with the bad structure.
Basically, they're asking for rubber stamp.
Correct.
I just want to clarify for myself.
Yes, yes, yeah, it is, it's, it's a little bit of an odd structure.
Five point five percent increases.
Yeah, and it's not super high, it's not super low.
Do we approve this or what?
Correct, yep.
I approve this resolution.
Motion by Eugene. Yes, with a, a very large name, so, because county staff wrote that. Motion by Eugene for the approval of the resolution. Question, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Heather, any other discussion among the board? Very none, roll call vote.
Christie?
Yes.
Paula? Lee?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Eugene?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
And Heather, yes.
Motion passes. Next, we have our first discussion item, which is financial procedures and policies. Heather met on Friday with Tina Erickson to start going over some things. Sounds like some more needs to be adjusted on there. Do you want to speak anymore on that, Heather?
Yeah, so Tina came in at, at the general ledger, there's a lot going on in there that doesn't really need to be going on in there. It's kind of like clutter desk, if that makes sense.
Sure does.
So we have to declutter and then work smarter and not harder and come up with better systems. Um, I talked to the auditor today to make sure that if we started that process from April, which was our new year, it would be okay. Um, we're not gonna officially change the policies and procedures and tell probably the new fiscal year. Like, then we would have a good rundown of what we know is working, worked out the kinks, um, so that we can present that. We'll present those as they come through, but they will be as an approval for the next year. So that way, that system starts new in the new fiscal year. Um, so, yeah, we just, there's stuff that needs to be cleaned up and sorted so that we can do it. She is going to be, um, potentially helping us do, so we can save some money. Adam won't be doing the reconciliations, we're gonna take it back and learn it. So Tina's gonna help us learn while we're going through the process. Is the goal. Now, if we start doing it and we get closer to the audit and we're like, yeah, absolutely not, we cannot handle this, we need somebody who does this every day to do it, then we're gonna bounce what's left back to Adam. And I talked to Adam, he was already okay with that. So, uh, hopefully that will help Christie, Christie, myself, and then whoever the clerk is, learn that process and come up with a better system, so.
Sounds good.
Questions, thoughts, any concerns on that?
It sounds like a plane.
Next, we have the water quality monitor report and bacteria sample report, this for all of the lakes. Everything came back in good range, it's in the packet, if anyone wants to see it, I have it on its own separate section online as well, if anyone wants to look at them. The only thing was high phosphorus in Twin Lake, which it's had for quite a while, quite a long time. It's part of why the switchbacks were put into the ride drain by the drain commissioner as well for filtering that out. And largely, it said, I think there's a small note, uh, which is essentially implying that people should probably not fertilize so much with phosphorus-containing fertilizers. But I don't think we're stopping that in my life, so. Uh, or you gotta implement a green zone, but trying to claim everyone's beach and then implementing a green zone seems unlikely as well. So I'm guessing they're just gonna block the phosphorus. Uh, otherwise, everything coming back is pretty good. Thoughts of any discussions, concerns, or? No idea. Beyond, beyond my normal vocabulary, some of the technical terms.
Making sure I didn't spell something wrong in this stuff.
No, it's not, it's less spelling, it's, it's, we don't think.
They, 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 I, I read these things, all right? I look at them, what are these strange words?
Uh, oh, atrophic means growth, so it's probably growth of something. Oh no, it's good bacteria, bad bacteria, seaweed.
Is there something else to Google?
Yeah, exactly. All right, so we have the deputy clerk position, uh, and this has been posted as open. Deputy clerk and admin assistant obviously decided to leave, so Heather put her email in here, heather.cooly@daltontownship.org. Anyone wants to send in their resumes, I know some interviews are scheduled. Anything else on that one?
Um. You do not have to live in the township to apply, that's something that people think that, that if you're a deputy or an admin, you do not have to live in the township. So if you know good candidates or people that you want to share that information.
Correct.
The deputy, the deputy clerk, just the electives, yep. So, um, yeah, unfortunately, that did not. Did not feel like that worked out, which is fair, but now that is vacant again, so we need to try to get that seat filled, so. But we need to also make sure that we're doing a good, make sure we got a good fit. We're not gonna rush, we're gonna, really make sure we got a good candidate.
Yep, anything else on that?
Raise your fist.
All right, then we have the clerk position. And so Heather and Tracy had had a conversation about this potential switch, and so we're supposed to have an answer on the 19th. Not sure exactly if that happened. Uh, Heather and I did talk though, and she would like to get sworn in on 23rd, no matter how that goes. So sometime in between now and the 23rd, we'll have that switch, I'm guessing the 23rd, that's likely. Anything else to add, Nola?
Um, I guess just when I, per information, when I had that conversation with her, she had not been watching the board, the board meetings, so she did not know what was going on. Um, I told her that things were gonna be changed, that policies and procedures were changing, that we were going to have, uh, somebody in to help us with financial stuff, and then we were also going to potentially have Mator in if things were not going correctly. And I said, this isn't a we don't like you thing, this is a we can't fail that bad again thing. Um, and I told her that the, when she fails, we all fail, nobody sets out to fail, nobody wakes up and says, you know what, I really want to fail today. So I just said, we just can't, so we have to work together to, she needs not fail. There you go.
That's great.
The running tally, the running tally in my head is up to 47 grand, I believe.
It's, it's gotta be.
It's here for extra expenses, loss reimbursements.
Uh, it was a pretty decent conversation, it wasn't like a.
That's for sale.
That's for sale.
Any other thoughts on that one?
To understand.
Um, if, I think you said it out here, but if she doesn't take it, then we need to look for someone.
Yes.
Correct.
They have to be in this.
They have to live in the township.
They have to be in the township, and so that being said too, um, we can't technically like put out for it, but if people want to express interest in a potential opening, they are absolutely allowed to do so. Um, so that is on there.
Yeah, because it's not actually vacant until January 2nd. Yeah, it's through the first that you can turn, so it's vacant on January 2nd, and then the board can either have a special meeting, or you can just go to the regular meeting, and then the board can point.
That's right.
Got to do it.
Wow.
Good, all right, that brings us to our second public comment.
I also wanted to let you know that Santa Claus is gonna be at the library Wednesday, 5:00 to 6:30. So anybody, uh, any child of any age would like to come in and visit Santa, and let him know his wishes for the season, he would be happy to do that. Very, we have a very nice Santa. And also have some crafts and, um, hand up candy canes, and that's some good things, yeah, bring your bags, take pictures of them, it's Santa, that's it. Um, we did have a giving tree, today's the last day, and we were supporting this year Noah's Project. And, um, so I still have a lot of tags for dogs and cats, um, only had two tags left for kids, so we did put it there. And then we have some seniors, this is through Salvation Army, only have some gifts, our senior citizens here, I'll be, we were collecting. So if anybody would like to take one of those before they leave today, appreciate that very much. Thank you for supporting the library, Jean, welcome to the board.
Yeah.
It's a regular library, he is here, you know his family, wow.
Excellent, anyone else? Anything?
Refresh me on where water services are at Dalton Township. Because I, I remember years ago, water line came up, uh, Whitehall Road.
Basically, river in Whitehall, in a simplified view.
Right, stops here, has it expanded at all from north, from Michigan Adventure to some other townships at all?
Don't think so.
Okay.
That's unfair, the expansion they're looking at is a little part of 120, but that's probably gonna start next year.
Okay, and then, then that water line running up, um. The old airport there. To the, to the front up there, and that line's probably still there, right? Along the.
The.
Off of M20.
Tuck and River Road.
Yeah.
Silver line that's.
Oh, it still runs down river, yep, and then it runs up 120, just a little ways to like where north side of, and whatnot is there. Um, so, well, and the sewer runs up there too, and then stops, but that's where they're gonna expand that water up to, uh, the, the hot, the child daycare place.
Oh, okay.
And then wrap it back around to connect into the part at River.
Okay, so it hasn't moved much in there, so it's.
No.
How much is. Thank you.
Good, anything else? All right, well, I will say that I appreciate everyone's work on, on various things, uh, for me, against me, whatever I happen to be, uh, over the last four and realistically five and a half years of political participation. So it's been interesting, that's essentially bonus meeting for me, obviously, and just maybe a couple more weeks left, and then, uh, and then I'm off. All right, so, uh, but anyone's free to reach out anytime, not like, that's held anyone back from reaching out anytime anyways. Uh, so, but still, still open to any inquiries.
We're going to miss you.
I appreciate it.
Very much. Hope we're looking forward to Heather, too.
Things aren't looking up. Good, otherwise, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Noah, do we have a support?
Support.
Support by Lee, discussion among the board. If you're all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
To adjourn.